Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'd like to call the regular monthly board meeting Monday, July 8, 2024, to order. Please rise for an invocation from Chaplain Chitwood.
I'd like to have a moment of silence for three firefighters who lost their lives this past month. And I'll pray. Dear God, we give honor to those who are worthy of that honor and have earned it. And Lord, those that have served others and have lost their lives, we thank you for them. And Lord, I pray that you will just be with their families and strengthen and comfort them. And Lord, as always, we ask for protection for the firefighters here in Benita, as well as the surrounding areas. Keep them safe from harm and watch over them, especially in this hot weather as they're out in just extreme conditions, watch over them. And Lord, we thank you for the freedom we have and celebrated this past week. Just thank you for the nation and those who've given their lives for us. It's in Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comment on agenda items this evening? Seeing none, I need a motion for the approval of the June 3, 2024, regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Same motion for June 20, 20, June 20th, 2024, budget workshop meetings.
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Jeff?
Yes.
Aye. One motion for the June 20, 24, current expenditures and ACH payments, acknowledgement of financial report, acknowledgement of wire transfers and transfers between accounts.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All favor?
Aye.
Need a budget transfer number two motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
And also one for the PO over $100,000 for the gear wash. Need a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Quick correction, Chairman, it's $10,000, not $100,000. Gear wash is only $30,000.
What did I say?
$100,000, PO's over $100,000.
I retract that motion.
Okay, sorry. I guess I'm turning it over to you?
Yep, yep. So we have a couple of five-year pins this month. So the first one's for Marcos Aries. So Marcos came to us from the other coast and, you know, he's been one of those firefighters that makes that trip every third day. And he's been that breath of fresh air on B-shift. You know, I remember when Marcos came in here and was doing his training and he was out there running. As you can tell, he's a little bit, he's a little muscular guy, but his cardio wasn't as what he thought it was. So it was one of those things and, you know, since that time, he's really stepped up to the plate and been that go-to guy, you know? Even coming from the other coast, never late, always here on time, you know, always one of those firefighters that is there for everybody. So, you know, I'd like to thank Marcos for five years and, you know, here's to many more. Thank you, sir. Next one's Daniel Hutchinson. Again, you know, these guys got hired together, they're out there doing their thing. And, you know, Daniel's one of those guys that, you know, he's always there, he's always helping out. He's one of those guys that you, he's always in the background, but he's always the first one to do everything. Daniel's also a Coast Guard, serves in the Coast Guard as the reserve. So here's a person that's giving on all fronts, you know? Daniel's given on the Coast Guard, he does his, you know, weekends a month and then his two weeks a year. But he's still that guy that's, you know, first to be there, last to be off the drill field. Always asking questions, always there wanting to know what's going on and how he can help. So to Daniel, another five years and thank you very much. And last but not least, Ashley Diaz. If you guys recall, we, last month, I think it was last month, or month before, we gave Ashley a pin for being promoted. So again, here's Ashley Diaz, who came to us five years ago as an administrative assistant. And she had some training in the background of FEMA, she had her plans, she had some different FEMA courses. And she's always wanting to learn. And so, you know, we sit here and talk to her and see what she's interested in and, you know, encourage her to do what she wants to do. Firefighting, she comes from a firefighter's background, her father was a battalion chief at the airport. But here's Ashley, you know, making her own way and she went out and says, let me try this inspector thing. You know, the dedication, the drive, the determination that she has is second to none. So, you know, here's five years of her, four of those five years of administrative assistant, or four and a half as administrative assistant. And, you know, I can't say anything more than I'm just so proud of her to take that next step and be an inspector. And now she's out from what the fire marshals tell us, just killing it as an inspector. So, you know, that same drive and dedication, I think she's, she has there too. So here's the five years, thank you very much for that and many more. And that's all I have, sir, for this.
Okay, thank you, congratulations. We can take a refreeze us if anybody would like to step out, otherwise you're welcome to stay. Okay, call it back to order. Good evening, Councilwoman Carr, thank you for coming. Commissioner's business, does anybody have anything they want to talk about?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So the chap on this morning, or just now, mentioned that the heat. So as a board, I would like to review our, I would like us as a board to review our policy, we obviously can't do it today, on training. Today, it was 104 heat index, last Saturday was 107. I'm not a doctor or a meteorologist, but I did call NOAA and the National Weather Service again. And we're not the Marines, the Marines stops training at 90 degrees. They no longer train outside of that 90 degrees. But this isn't the same climate we've been dealing with a couple of years, I've been here my whole life. And it's changed and I was talking to my brother and I said, hey, are we getting older or is it getting hotter? And he goes, no, I think it's getting hotter. So I called NOAA again for the second time and the National Weather Service. And I think as a board, we should look at our policy for training. I know that we're on board with the national standards right now. I think the international standards are a little lower, but I think we should be trendsetters. I'm an agent of change, I think to protect our men and women, I think it's in our best interest that we actually put it on the agenda for next board meeting and we vote. I'd volunteer to write the new policy with, in conjunction with the chief. I think we need to really look at how dangerous it is. I was sweating so profusely just walking from my car to this building. It's hot, it's not the same that it was even when you were on the line. I'm looking at you, Eric, I'm just saying, it's hot. And yes, I know our men and women are going to deal with hot, coupled with bunker gear, you add anywhere from 20 to 40 degrees on top of what? And I spoke with my doctor, I just called her up and she took my call. And heat index temperature, your body can't differentiate between a heat index temperature of 107, which was Saturday, it was 104 yesterday, I've got it documented. 104, your body can't tell the difference. So say it's only 92, but the heat index is 104, your body, your heart, your blood pressure, your heart rate goes up. It's dangerous. And I know nobody wants these guys falling over, and I'm not sure, I didn't get to speak with the chief, but if our guys are practicing on duty, say they're doing something, say a B.C. has them doing something, it's outside. Whether they're in bunker gear or not, it's terribly miserably hot. Do they still have to answer calls after that?
Yes.
So I don't know what the cooldown period is, but I think we need to start-
They gotta answer calls, just real quick, they gotta answer calls no matter what the heat index or what the temperature is.
No, I get that, I just don't want to add to it by sending these guys, these men and women out. I think it's something, as a board, we should look at the policy, set a new policy and say, hey, we're going to lower, we're going to lower the temperature right now. I think it's 113 right now?
110.
110.
State of Florida at the State Fire College is greater than 124. They have a work rest ratio that if the heat index is greater than 124, they work for 10 minutes of work time and 50 minutes of rest time and having one liter of fluid per hour is what the state of Florida uses. And which is what we've had for the last two years as a policy, per the state of Florida, because we called Susan Shell at the State of Florida Fire College.
Okay.
But I have no problem putting it on there next month.
That's a starting point, but I think we should really be realistic. And we all know, when we walk outside our houses, couple that with trying to do stuff. And if we can have them do other things or something indoors, or have them make up for it in the winter. You have a program and you have a standard that you run this district too. And I said, this district is the, I truly mean that with all my heart, is the best district. I want to continue that standard. However, I don't want to do it at the risk of one of our men and women succumbing to heat exhaustion. I don't think we've had any problems yet and I want to keep it that way. So all I'm asking is that we have a discussion, we look at our current policy and we set a new trend and say, you know what? It's, yeah, it's crazy hot, we'll be the agency, the district, that other districts will copy and come to and say, hey, we can set the new standard. That's all I'm saying.
I will email each one of you the current standard that we put out last year and this year and what the state of Florida has. I will also set it up for next year, or for next board meeting that we'll discuss it and see. But just know that we do have the weather stations here and at Station 22. This one right now, we have it set that, because most of the training goes on here, has it set to go to the B.C. phones and to the chief levels' phones? That after 110, there is no, heat index of 110, there is no outside training. So that's already been set in motion.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Well, anybody have any comments on this?
Yeah, I don't.
So you have a policy in place now?
Yes, we implemented probably two years ago now.
Is there other things in that policy or is it just, is that a line item in that policy or is it a general policy for everything?
To be honest, it's a general email that went out that said, you know, we will do no outside training after 110 degrees. 110 degrees heat index. And that is based on a phone call and emails that we received from the state of Florida. Her name's Susan Shell and she's the state of Florida's safety officer. She's the one that reviews, like, if there's a safety issue, i.e. what happened in Miami Dade, she's the one in charge of that firefighter deaths. She's the one that comes down. When Braxton had an issue with firefighters' safety in the burn can, she's the one that came down and evaluated that. So they have a sliding scale of basically heat index versus work-rest ratio and fluid intake.
And what would be your recommendation for a temperature?
The people that I've contacted is, like I said, there's certain different agencies, but I'm trying to compare apples to apples. So there are other fire districts in the state of Florida that have gone to 100. Ultimately, I'd like to see us copy the Marine Corps because they've done numerous studies and go to 90, 90, 95 degrees.
That'd be almost every day in the summer.
Well, you know-
Right, am I correct?
If you're talking heat index, if we're talking heat index, yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I guess I would like to see the Marine Corps' policy also, I mean. Because again, I'll use the IFF, I'll use the IFF as an example, because I know I had this discussion with President Brown. IFF says, consider, it's not a line item, it's consider, I forget, I got it on a text, but it's not stop it, it's consider alternatives. At 95, then add 10 degrees for bunker gear, which made a heat index of 105, I believe that's what it says. And it just says, consider alternatives, it doesn't say stop it. And it was actually, if I correctly remember, it was more so geared towards hazmat when you're in a Level A suit, fully encapsulated.
Okay.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would like to have input from the union to hear what their position is on this. So Roy, if you could get back to the chief and he could come back to us, I'd like to know how the men feel about all this, okay?
So if you go on international too, for the IFF, they do also talk about heat acclimation and how important it is, which is part of the training when it is hot outside. Obviously, that's why we have different measures in place to make sure we don't overdo it. But if you don't get these guys somewhat acclimated to heat in the summertime, then that's going to be a problem on calls. Like today, we had a fire where guys were, you know, in gear and sweating. We set up rehab right away, we have lots of measures in place and happy to say, we haven't had any issues as of yet. So there's something to be said about training, but it's obviously, I hear what you're saying and I agree. There's definitely thresholds to meet where you start pulling back. And usually what we do is, if it starts getting hot out, not even when it gets to the 110, we usually do it A in the morning, when you're not even close to that heat index, or B, we'll do it in the bays and the shade. And we have those fans that we bought at all the stations to put those big giant fans to blow some air through and try and keep them cooler. So last thing we want to do is to make these guys, where they get a serious call and they're out and exhausted and can't handle that issue.
Yeah, I didn't imply or infer that you guys don't care about the guys or, I'm just saying, I've been a voracious reader and I've been reading. And I just want to open the discussion and make sure we're doing everything we can on our end.
And again, I mean, we still have a standard also with ISO rating. So if we don't, part of our ISO rating is our training. And there is ways around it, you know? You know, some of this came about, or some of this discussion came about because we did live fire training a month and a half ago. And, you know, when we get these acquired structures, we can't put them off until June, July, I mean, until January, February, March, when it's the cooler months. So there is alternatives and, you know, I don't think the men and women would like those alternatives and that would be, we won't train in the heat. You're exactly right, we'll just do night training, they'll have the days off, all they'll do is run calls. Then at night, when the heat index is down, then we'll go out and do certain training if we have to. Because again, we still have to provide a quality ISO rating. I don't think the board or the community wants us, our ISO rating to suffer.
No, that's a good point, I don't, I just don't want to do it at the expense of-
No, great, neither do we, that's why we said, I will tell you that there are other departments around here that have no, because we did the survey and that's why we picked 110, based on the state of Florida. But I can tell you, out of the 17 departments around here, I don't know very many, if any, has a set standard of no training at this, at a temperature.
Well, just from my logical mind, it would seem to me if people are starting to get heat exhaustion, you stop. Doesn't matter what the hell the temperature is, if you're starting to feel uncomfortable and you need to, you know, hydrate and relax, it shouldn't matter if it's 88 degrees and you're having an issue or if it's-
Right, no, I agree.
Or 120 degrees, you're having an issue, it should be based on how you feel, not a magic number. Because I'm just thinking that at 109, maybe I don't feel good, but I don't, we don't hit till we hit 110, we're still-
Right, no, I understand.
So, I mean, to me, it just, you know, it just seems from a logical standpoint, the battalion chiefs and lieutenants have that authority now. And I'm sure that if you're not feeling well, you're not going to be afraid to say something and no matter what the temperature is, nobody's going to go, well, how come, how come you didn't wait till it hit 110 or 100 or whatever and you're bagging out? It's like, it's when you're done, you're done. And I don't know if putting a number on it makes anymore, I mean, I understand we have to put a maximum number, but-
I think that's the point, I think that's what the local 3444 wants and President Brown. I mean, they don't, they don't want it, to a degree, they don't want it left up to the officers or this and that. They want a black and white number. And it makes it easier for them to, black and white, like, look, 110 is a number. If that number changes and goes lower, then that's, you know, that's something we can discuss. But I don't think they want to just arbitrarily, hey, whenever you feel like it, you don't have to or you do have to. Again, because then you'll get, you may get that gung-ho guy that's very acclimated to it and like, hey, man, this ain't that hot out, I'm in good shape or whatever. Let's go out and do this and it may hurt somebody and we don't want that.
Thanks for listening.
Like I said, I'll email the email that we put out to everybody and go from there.
Anybody else have anything? Old business, anybody have any old business?
I'd like to ask how we stand about Hickory Island with the restaurant Hickory, Old Hickory? Is there anything new at that time frame?
We're still in the waiting, Steve.
So what it is, we signed that paper about two months ago now. So within five days, they gave us the good faith deposit. So we're about 10 days, 10 to 15 days short. At that point, at 60 days, they were supposed to, or they're supposed to show us, not so much their financials, but what are their financial plan? Because again, the purchase agreement isn't contingent on financing or anything like that, that was never part of it. So, but they're supposed to lay out their financial plan of how they're going to accommodate and how they're going to facilitate this purchase. So that's coming up at that point, they're supposed to show that in 60 days, then in 90 days, give the rest of the deposit down. Then 215 days after that is when they, is their due diligence, that we have it off the market. And at 215 days, if they don't get something from the city or a good faith from the city that they are, their permits are good and so on, then at that point, they can pull out. And that's where we're at.
Thank you.
So we're at like day 45, about 51, 52.
So technically, they can only back out if the city does not give approval for their permitting. But if they come back and say, our financing fell through, they still bought it?
They still bought it, or they lose their deposit.
They lose their deposit, you can't make a buyout.
Right, no, no, okay, that's great.
I gotta, I'm going to bring up old business because I think we need to go a different direction with TECO. I want this to go political now, I don't, I know you've done what you can at your level. So I think from here, we need to talk to our local representatives and do something about this at a Tallahassee level. Because everybody's been kicking this can around and we had one the other day again.
And that's what I was going to say, I know it's getting better because he showed me his iPad and he said, all right, here's the valve, here's where we're going to shut it off and here's where the, now I will tell you that in his iPad or his mapping program, it showed the line as green, which is proposed line. It was already there, they were digging the holes, it was already live, it was already there, they were digging a hole by the pool and struck a two-inch main. But on a positive note, they do have the mapping, it is forward, but it still may be a little outdated and we can't talk to our local representatives.
Well, I'm at a point now where if we have to, for this next legislative session, we try to get a bill put through, which should be relatively easy to make them comply.
Okay, we will talk to our local representative.
It's better to be like this than it is to have somebody get blown up, have a whole section of town anywhere in the state. So I think that it's time, we've been screwing around with this now for several months and I'm kind of over it. Thank you. New business, tentative millage. Did you have old business?
No, I want to make a motion.
Oh, well, I think he's got a comment for-
One thing, we skipped number nine disposals.
Oh, disposal, my bad, yes. Need a motion for the disposal?
So moved.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
The, I was so excited about talking about TECO, I just wanted to skip that. Okay, you have a comment you want to make here?
So basically, for the budget, tonight's the night when we have to set our tentative millage rate. Millage rate that we sit tonight is the maximum millage that we can levy moving forward. My recommendation is going to be to keep it at what it currently is, which is 1.9466, that's the current millage rate we have. We were able to do what we needed to do last year at that millage rate this year. As you guys recall at the budget workshop that we had that you guys voted on the minutes. On tonight, I told you that the rough estimated numbers came in at like 16 billion, 16.4, 16.5, something like that, which equated to about a 9% increase. And if you also recall at that meeting, I said, very rarely does it go up more than a percent. You know, usually it's a half percent because the property appraiser does a good job at his job, you know, you would think. So with that being said, July 1st, July 2nd, we got the new updated millage numbers in and that rate is now $17.3 billion, which equates to about 12%, a little over 12% increase. So he missed a mark by over 3%. So again, because of us losing our homestead exemption two years ago and us still trying to recoup some of that, my recommendation is to leave it at 9466, 19466. We can always go down, you know?
This is a maximum, as it always is, we can't go higher than this, but if, when we get down to the nitty-gritty, we can go lower, but we cannot go higher.
That will be my motion.
Okay, you made that motion?
I will make the motion that we keep the tentative millage rate at 1.9466.
Chairman, I'd like to ask a question because-
Second, something, need a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now that you can ask that question.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to ask you, I had COVID, I wasn't at the workshop.
Correct.
In your professional opinion, 12% is a huge increase.
Correct.
Especially when we thought it was nine and it's normally much lower. That's, that will make the district sustainable for future projects that we have coming up, for future purchases. That we should still be in good shape by leaving it where it is right now.
Yes, yep, I think that we can put enough money away for future projects, whether it be, you know, we need to start looking at or thinking about Ladder 22, it's a 2016. You know, it's getting, I mean, and with the lead time still being two to three years, we're going to start putting money away for it now.
And the prices have gone stupid.
Yeah, the prices have gone crazy.
I mean, they've gone from 400 to 500 to 800, 900 for the same truck.
You know, the truck, you know, the engine that we paid, you know, $600,000 for is now $851,000.
Yeah, no, I know, we did a solid by purchasing that one early, but, okay.
Yeah, so yes, that would be my recommendation, I don't think we need to raise it. I think with the 12% increase, I think that, I think we're in great shape.
Although I made that motion to have that as our maximum tentative rate. I fully expect that we're going to be able to lower that. I hope that, it's my hope that we will lower that at some point in time here, we don't need a whole 12% increase. But I'll be willing to vote for this.
And we'll work through the budget process on that. Again, you know, my concern is, is we've still got, you know, the money.
Let's close this motion out, because the motion is, is that our maximum will stay at what it is, is the 1.9466. And we have a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
As far as the rest of the budget stuff, we've got other workshops and all that stuff that we'll be doing with that. Chief, you have more to add?
Yeah, I have a few things, I do have a few things. I just want to mention that Business After Hours is July 25th, it's at the Town Place Suites right there behind Coconut Point. If anybody would like to go, it's 4 to 6, but it's July 25th, it's a Thursday. The other thing I would like to talk about is Squad Saturday. I don't know if you, if any of you walked out back and seen the car hanging off the side of the tower? Have driven by and seen the car hanging off the side of the tower? So every, every month, we get together with other fire departments to do like heavy rescues, they call them squads. Estero has squad, which is their Engine 43 or Squad 43. South Trail has one, Iona McGregor has one. All the departments that are part of use are also invited to these Squad Saturdays. So for three Saturdays in a row, a fire department hosts a training event to showcase what's going on with squads, whether it's vehicle machinery, whether it's rope, whether it's confined space, you know, like those type of incidents. So we have a car hanging out back and it's going to be a rope evolution. So it is this Saturday and following Saturday, three Saturdays in a row. It is roughly from about 9 to 12. So if you guys want to, if anybody wants to stop by and see it, they'll be out here. Just come and take a look at it, it's pretty neat. The other thing, just to let you guys know, EMS assessments are going right now, full swing for the next couple of weeks. Same thing, physicals start the last week of JI and go through August. And then finally, Roy, if you want to come up to the podium also. Last and President- And then finally, Roy, if you want to come up to the podium also, I'm asking President Roy Brown to come up from Local 3444. I just would like to tell him, you know, you guys all know, and for Commissioner Kissinger, this is your first year being on the board, but not your first time being in Benita Springs. So, for the last 32, 34 years, the Local 3444 has sponsored the Fourth of July Parade. So, I'd just like to say thanks to President Brown, to Local 3444, excellent job. Frank Todd as the parade chairman, parade coordinator, did an excellent job, had nobody injured, I think everybody had a good time, well-attended. So, I'd just like to say hats off to Local 3444 for a great job. And also, you know, afterwards, we had the party, whatever you want to call it, downtown Benita with the fireworks, the drones, the laser light show, you know, we had crews on, on call down there, we had them standing by, everybody did an excellent job. So, I just want to say hats off to everybody, job well done by everybody. And in the future, you know, we used to do this way back when, Local 3444 had a little plot in here to say, a little saying in here, a little number in here to say, hey, what's going on with Local 3444? So, that's why I called Roy up. In the future, we'll probably put that back on there, but for tonight, if you'd like to say anything about the parade and about what's going on, so.
Uh, Chief, thank you, thank you very much. I first want to recognize and, and, you know, thank the chief for assisting us with the coordination, and really, all of them. I know Chief Schmidt had, had a lot of, um, you know, communication back with Frank Todd, you know, making our I A P, and just coordinating with Frank. And, you know, again, thank you very much, we appreciate all that assistance, because obviously, the parade wouldn't be much of a parade without, without the fire trucks in it. So, thank you to, you know, you guys as well, all of you, for allowing this to go on. Uh, you know, also, a big thank you for having that, that amount in the budget that is, that is approved to assist with paying some of these large expenses that we do incur. L C S O did a great job, they were, actually, they were even able to lower some of the cost for the parade, because they brought in some on-duty officers. So, that, they, you know, were, they were fantastic really to work with. And honestly, I have to say, like, this, I thought last year was one of the best ever, and this year, I think, probably beat last year. It was a really fantastic event. Chief, you know, great job with, with our lieutenant, I call him Lieutenant Bozo, you know, they had a good back-and-forth going with the mic, so they had that going. There was a lot of water, I'm not sure everyone's opinion on that, but it seemed like everyone was having a great time. We try to get away from the candy aspect, working with L C S O, they absolutely hate it, and, you know, it does cause a lot of waste in the streets, and, but most importantly, the children being inches from the firetruck tires, for, you know, especially that downtown section where it's completely different than it was 10, 10-plus years ago. But, no, I mean, it was, it was a great event, it all came together well, all parties really, you know, just, you know, everyone came together, and it, and again, I mean, right, this kind of starts in January. So, we start in January, you know, we kind of work on the, you know, the logo, the design, and kind of as it goes through, we working with the businesses, and this is all kind of also while we're trying to do like the golf tournament and a couple other events going on. So, yeah, it was, it was a great year, we're always hoping to have it be bigger and better every year. And Chris from G and C, he's been our platinum sponsor now for two years in a row, and he just, he loves it. He pays his guys overtime to be there at the parade, I think he spends like 3,000 or 4,000 in candy, and, you know, he brings all his rigs in, and he just loves being a part of it, and, you know, we're very thankful for him. And I, obviously, for, for any proceeds we make, it goes towards our benevolent fund, so that's where we kind of have some, some great grand plans in the future of, you know, just doing more things in the community like we, we used to in the past, you know, from, from painting people's houses, or setting up handicap ramps, maybe, you know, doing more benches and picnic tables at certain areas in the, in the city. So, that's kind of our, our ideas moving forward. So, yeah, thank you for, for allowing the recognition to come up here, Chief, appreciate you, and appreciate everyone here, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to second what the chief said, it was, it was a great job, and for the people watching at home, I like to see the union and the administration working together, that's awesome, and I'd like to point out that anybody, any fireman that wasn't in a uniform, they volunteered their time that whole, that whole day, they, that was all volunteer, and, and thanks for letting everything happen, so that was great, thank you.
Okay, and you have the reports, the deputy chief's reports and fire marshal report in your pack, if anybody has any questions on that, otherwise, we're gonna move on. Public comment, Alex, you're up.
Oh, okay.
You got four minutes to tell me how I'm gonna fix all of the hurricane problems.
First thing I gave you about the beetle, acrylate, what that was with the fire damage in the, by the National Transportation Safety Board, the East Calentine Fire, you got that information?
Yep, I got it.
Et cetera, et cetera. Okay, now, this is the important-
You got to go to the, at least a podium or something.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Grant.
Do you need Lieutenant Brown's help? Do you need his help to hold posters?
Well, even that, well, I can do this. You sure? Maybe, hopefully, well, all right, grab a poster, okay? Okay, here we go. So, everybody can see, the big problem is evacuation, okay, from this area. If you use US 41, Interstate 75, even US 31, from the Sarasota area, but where Manatee County, Badenton area, from here to Magdala Air Force Base area and just north of there, there is between a half a mile and two miles between the water and the land. If we have another-
If we have, okay, if we have another major hurricane, another Ian, okay. This area would be inundated. This area, in other words, the flooding would occur here. Remember in Ian, we had flooding in this area, Northport, where the Florida Highway Patrol had to shut down I-75 for a few days until the flooding left. So, we have a major problem in evacuation this way. The only pro, and this, there's a railroad track, there's the two, three major roads, and you, something happens here, we're in big trouble. Now, the other, the one situation is, in this case, we have from the Lakeland area, this is 30, over 30 miles from the coast, that's important, because this line along the railroad track is out of major damage, hurricane problem area. Even if somebody were to drop a nuclear weapon in this area, the beta radiation would go no more than about 30 miles. Just a couple things to think about. And the area here, this area, even though it was damaged in Hurricane Ian, it was not as severely damaged in this area down to Benita as, I don't know what you guys can do with the county commissioners or the other fire districts to put pressure on, but this is a serious problem.
Thank you, Alex.
Eric and Roy, you guys did a good job.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you for coming.